...for 209,315403. Has anybody got any comments? Okay.
That's all we need to do.
That's all we needed. Okay. So, roll call, please.
Keith?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Item two is report from the Hennessy United Board.
Oh. We've got four people. We can't meet in our court.
Yeah. Got to do that.
Oh, okay. What did they usually say? We did not meet last month, but we have agreed on the farmer's market. And I'm here today to talk about that and, I don't know. And Angie Berners coming next month or next week to our meeting to discuss our website.
Okay. Sounds great. Okay, consider approval of the consent agenda. Item A, minutes of the June meetings. Item B, approval of claims as follows. June purchase orders, 2001, 2145. July purchase orders, 34,216. July restricted sales tax fund, 29,27059. July library fund, 2002, 4119. July street and alley fund, $53.20. And accept the following reports, Treasury, Library, and Police. Anybody got any questions or additions to the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that. Roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item four is set of its comments. Anybody got anything that's not further on the agenda? Bart?
All right, I don't know. Maybe Tiffany's going to handle it, the sanitation schedule. Are you going to discuss that? All right.
Okay. Item five is town administrators' report. Tiffany?
Um, sorry, I didn't get anything written this month.
That's okay.
Um, but the sanitation, they did come in today. The poly charts, they will be delivered the last week of this month. Um, we're going to get notification out hopefully, um, if tomorrow goes well, tomorrow is not Monday. And when Shelley comes back, um, but the people who are picked up on Mondays and Thursdays that are inside the city limits, or I should say getting more north, um, will be picked up on Mondays, beginning in August. The people on Tuesday, Fridays, they will be picked up on Tuesdays, um, but they'll also include anyone outside of town, south of Getmore, such as Ike's Acres, Miller Heinz, and all of that. They'll be picked up on Tuesdays. Um, they also came into town and went and visited with a majority of the businesses to talk about the size of containers and how many times a week. And they were able to help customers, maybe if they had a two-yard, three times a week, they'll go with a six-yard one time a week. So be able to save them some money there.
I did have a question from one, um, person that had their, they had their own dumpster and they were asking about purchasing from, instead of having to pay a monthly fee of purchasing, go ahead and purchase in a dumpster.
We will not.
Purchase it from them.
We will not have any separate fees. They'll all be leased dumpsters. Because it's hard to keep track of own versus lease. And then you got drivers that come in and say, um, oh, this, this dumpster is in bad shape and they replace it. And some have been replaced that were own, then there's just a lot of.
Well, they were, they were just frustrated because they've owned their own for a long time and now it's going to cost them like $1,200 a year, whatever it is to, to lease one.
I don't think there's any lease fees.
Well.
It's just all incorporated into the monthly.
It is, but I will tell you that if they owned their dumpster before, it was considered gross. And that's just us going based on the previous prices for over 20 years. Um, let's see. The water plant, we will be having a special meeting, um, July 29th. Ben Oglesby with Municipal Finance, he's going to come speak to us on a financing option. We're right now, we have a 2017, in 2017, we did a super note. Um, he's talking about, with the bank, about redoing that one, getting a lower interest rate, and then, um, being able to put the water plant repairs onto that. So he's going to come talk to us.
When you say pass this, it's a special town council meeting?
Yes. Yes, on the 20, what was it, the 29th, I think? The Thursday. Um, so we are still working on trying to get the water plant. Um, if we, if we do that, then we can have money as, as early as the middle of August to be able to do the repairs. So, um, we have gone out to bid for the REIT water lines. They should be back right before next board meeting, so you guys will be, um, hopefully proposing, or hopefully awarding that bid at the next council meeting, or at the next regular council meeting.
Good.
For the water lines on, um, Semeron and Oberon West Six.
Are we still looking at the water line for, with the gentleman on, um, Semeron Conical Road?
I'm still looking for some type of method. I have been bombarded with a lot of other stuff. I haven't been able to dedicate, but yes, it's still, it's still, I'm still looking for funding.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Item six is other scheduled business. We have Doug on screen, so we'll proceed on with that. Discuss, approve, deny, reject.
Hold on, can we do Jennifer real quick? She's a, can we do A? You want, can we do A first?
Yes.
Okay. She's here for A.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to do A.
Okay, I thought you said Doug.
Well, I did, but I thought.
Okay.
I misread. Okay, discussion of national CDPG, 17767-19, grant closeout activities that include approving all final invoices except the certificated completion from Cowan Group, sign closeout checklist, and final ledger report.
So your final invoices include two from Cowan Group, um, that finishes out their, their contracts. There's one, and those are paid with local funds. There's one for, um, using CDPG money, that is the last invoice for NODA for grant administration fees. And then there are two from young contracting that finishes out, uh, their contracts as well. So those are the final invoices there. On your funds, you have used all of the CDPG funds that you were given and of the allotment of money that you put towards the project, you are saving about $6,900 that you did not spend. So every little bit helps, so that it did come in under budget.
Great.
The rest of the documentation, um, is pretty much just standard that head wants us to fill out documenting that, how much we paid the contractor and that they paid their employees properly, and then we have a check, check, uh, closeout checklist we have to sign.
Jennifer?
Sir?
Are you just saying you could go in and verify all the bills not coming from us here in Hennessy, but you go to the company? You say you verified the employee's been paying? Is that what you said?
I, because it's a federal grant, the contractor is required to pay Davis Bacon wage rates on the project, which is prevailing wages.
Okay.
So I, at least once or twice, I see their weekly payrolls to make sure they're paying them properly, as well as check, um, pay subs if they have them. But I actually interview the employee themselves to make sure that they're getting paid properly.
I was just curious.
Yeah. That's what we do.
Okay. Need further discussion?
So the total is the 3,37212 plus the 12,60532, is that correct?
That is, yes, that is what, the last two invoices for the contractor. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I move that we approve a CDPG number 17767-19, grant closeout. Do you have more to that?
And it's not.
Nope, perfect.
I second that. Roll call, please.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Richard?
Okay, item B, discussion on action to accept the CDPG number 17767-19 grant as complete and sign the closeout resolution.
I make a motion to accept the CDPG grant number 17767-19, grant as complete and sign the closeout resolution.
I second. Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I have you sign those documents?
Absolutely.
All right, I'll do that. Do you have everything for me? It's okay. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Okay, item C, discussion of possible action concerning on ordinance number, we don't have.
381.
381?
Yes.
2021-381.
Yes.
An ordinance amending the presently existing provisions of Title 10 and 11 of the Town Code for the Town of Hennessy, Kingfisher County, State of Oklahoma, dealing with the use and development properties located in the Town of Hennessy by way of repeal thereof and adoption of the provisions herein contained to be known as the Unified Development Ordinance for the Town of Hennessy, Oklahoma, and codified in Title 10 of the Town Code of ordinances for the said town, and providing for repeal, saving clause, safe harbor authorization, and severability, and declaring an emergency. I'm sorry, I read D.
So that one's actually 382. So you're starting with D first?
No. Don't need to read C. Discussion of past possible action on the ordinance number 381, an ordinance amending the present existing provisions of Title 9 of the Town Code for the Town of Hennessy, Kingfisher County, State of Oklahoma, dealing with construction, building, maintenance, and repair of properties and structures located in the Town of Hennessy by way of repeal thereof and adoption of the provisions herein contained to be known as the Building and Construction Ordnances for the Town of Hennessy, Oklahoma, and codified in Title 9 of the Code of Ordnances and for the said city, and providing for repealer and severability of all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency. There was a public hearing earlier. I understand the public was here with the building, the planning committee.
Planning committee.
The planning committee has recommended passage of this with some changes, which I'm going to turn over to Tiffany to go over with us right now.
So, um, I don't know who all has a copy. Jay, can you share with Scotty? Paige? Okay, so we're in Title 9, okay?
I can share my screen, Tiffany, if that would be helpful.
Can you? Okay.
Then we have Doug.
Doug with IDTS.
I also have Tim.
So we're going to go to page two.
Actually, you've got something set to where it won't let me share my screen. Sorry.
Okay, I don't, I don't know, so.
I kind of went over.
Okay.
Not a problem.
That was Tim.
So on page two, um.
Yeah, okay.
And I will tell you that these, if, if you guys approve these tonight, there's going to be changes on them, because we're going to find stuff that doesn't work, um, stuff like that. So there's going to be changes. That's just the same way with our code book. Once we accept our code book, we make multiple changes to our code book. I mean, that's the same with these. So keep in mind that these can be changed, okay? Um, page two, number eight. Is it there? No, this is the wrong one. This one right here. I don't know what all you've got. Something that's not right.
Oh, okay.
He just has a bunch of.
I worked on yours.
Okay.
We'll share.
Okay. Okay. So page two, section 105, point 2, point 2. It says, of the building code is amended to include, it says notwithstanding the provisions of this section, the owner and occupant of single residential dwelling performing alterca- alterations or modifications to the existing dwelling shall be considered ordinary repairs. So they do not, and they shall not require a permit. We're going to say and/or. Instead of ands, we're going to change that to and/or. So the owner and/or the occupant. So, um, is that, so like an owner of a rent house can do it or?
Could still go in and do, make the neighborhood repairs without having to, yeah, absolutely.
Yes. Okay. So that change was made during the planning board, okay? So then, if you go to page 10. And item B at the top, that's going to be deleted.
Item B?
B, yes. And that is because it contradicts with a statement made under the previous page under 1. Because under 1, it says a permit shall not be required for making minor repairs in existing plumbing within any building. But then it says, it talks about minor repairs shall be made by a licensed plumber. So we're going to take that out.
Tiffany?
Huh?
Do you still have to give a plumbing permit?
For what?
If you're not using a licensed plumber.
If you're doing your own, though.
Okay. Just carry it out.
Or if you're doing minor repairs. No, you don't have to. No matter, but you have to be a licensed plumber unless you are doing your own. If you come to my house and work on mine, then you have to be licensed.
I see.
But if I'm doing it, then I don't have to, minor.
And also, if it is a major plumbing, it's not just minor repairs, you do have to hire a plumber. And the reason behind that is, is you don't, you don't know necessarily what you're doing. And we do not, the way it's set up that way in Oklahoma is so that you don't inadvertently do something that will contaminate the, with water supply and all. The state of Oklahoma will let you do your own electrical. And I believe the reason for that is, is because on your house, you can't do it on your rent house, but you could do it on, um, and I think the reason for that is, is you're not going to hurt anybody but yourself. You know, if, if you do something that's wrong, you're, you burn down your house, you're not going to burn down or contaminate the electrical system on it. Same with gas as well, is you can't deal with gas because you could potentially cause an explosion.
Doug, I, I, on the electrical, you said electrical? Electrical allows you to do it if you own the house. Under this code.
If you own your own house, that's, that's intended by statute.
It doesn't say that you have, it doesn't say that you have to occupy the house. It just says if you own the house.
Okay. Yeah, you, you actually, you cannot do it if, if it's a rent house. You have to hire that out.
So on the plum, on the plumbing, what do you call minor?
Excuse me?
On plumbing, what do you call minor?
Well, like if.
Most of the stuff you do is minor.
If I have a, if I have a water leak on my faucet.
Or you're switching out a toilet or something like that.
That's right.
If you're putting in a new sewer line, that's major.
Yes.
And the code, the code gives pretty good direction on that as well, and, and, you know, obviously, building official.
I thought I could do my own sewer line, but I didn't take, touch the main connection.
You can't go below grade. The distinction is, you can't go below grade. Everything above ground, measure pervayance, anything below grade, plumbing.
Which, when you go below grade, that's when you get into the city stuff, and so that's why, yeah.
And that's acceptable. That's the way it's always been.
Well, how do, I mean, if you got a sewer line plugged up and you, and you dig it out, how do you, you got to hire a plumber to do that?
When you connect to city sewer, you would have to state code, plumbing code, and the state building codes, if you can buy a plumber to connect to a water meter and to connect to the sewer.
But I'm asking though, if I have a line plugged up, then how do I unplug it myself if I want to plug?
If there are cleanouts in it, you're, you're legal to do that. You're not, it's, it's a gray area, but you're not allowed to put your own cleanouts in. You can't dig down and cut the line and put the cleanout in. But like houses we build now, we put a cleanout next to the house.
And then they're able to clean it.
And you, you can rent a snake and go, because you can't hurt any, there's nothing to hurt.
Correct.
But I mean, it's, it's generally accepted, like, construction industry's board shows up and you dug down to the sewer line and you got it open and you don't have a plumbing license, you're going to get fined. It's just, that's the distinction between licensed and unlicensed on your property.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, that's not public conduct of view, you asked.
Thanks for throwing that in, though.
Yes, thank you, Jay. And then also on page, so I told you, page 10, page 35. Um, item C. It talks about a special exception may be granted by the Board of Adjustments for a temporary placement of a factory-built home. We're going to change that to a factory-built home or travel trailer. So like if somebody is building a home and they want to live in a travel trailer for that, it gives a, a time period that they can get, then they can do that.
For up to a year.
Because I don't see them putting all the money into doing like a manufactured home or.
Right.
A modular home, whatever, like these factory-built homes. I look for them to do like a travel trailer, and so that's why we had it out.
Okay.
I think that's, in this one, that's all the changes that I had. I think that was it, Doug, right? Just those three?
Yes, Tiffany, sorry. I, I was trying to catch that edit as well. Um, yes, I, I believe that was it. So on that first edit that you talked about, about changing it to and/or.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be changed, like, for the plumbing, for the electrical?
No, that's just the building.
It's just the building?
Mm-hmm. Because I think, um.
The way it read, you would have to have both the owner and occupant to.
And/or.
Yeah, to make changes. You'd have to have them both in agreement. This way it would just be the owner or.
And/or.
Um, and/or. I didn't get very far along reading this, but I made a little waste coming fine. Tiffany, I almost prefer just and, because I don't like the idea of a renter making a change to a property without the owner not knowing.
But why can't the owner make it without the occupant?
Yeah, I think that's fine, but I, I, but the occupant should not be making a change to a property they don't own without the owner.
Just going to shut down. Whoop. Sorry, it's my fault. My fault. It said it was shutting down in 119 seconds.
There, here's.
Okay, there you are.
Sorry about that.
Don't touch it again, Doug.
Never mind. You know, it's not, I don't have any interest in, I didn't have any interest in, in this You know, it's not, I don't have any interest in, I didn't have any interest in, in this provision, because that's not what I do. But I would point out, that other cities that have tried to regulate what goes on with and, eventually, they have found themselves, that's a real touchy area of law. That when ALBA had that going on, they faced civil lawsuits about two different times for an inspector beating on a door and then gaining entrance to residence. Even Oklahoma Natural Gas, if ONG shows up and they decide you've done something, they, they wanna inspect your gas line, you can refuse them entrance and they cannot enter. Now, of course, they're gonna take your gas meter with them when they leave, but the point is, is we live with the idea that your home is your castle.
But-
But I think that that's pretty much what this, I mean-
But I mean, I don't see why we would even be involved in the and/or business of that part of being the code. Because unless somebody was building onto the house or changing the exterior-
I think it's saying that those, that those people are exempt, is what it's trying to say.
From getting a permit.
From a permit.
And I'm saying we shouldn't even be involved in that.
Right. But the, where I was talking about is on page, page nine. And it says, on three, it says, "The provisions of this section shall not apply to," and then in B, it says, "The owner and occupant of a single-family residential dwelling." Should that get the same language as what you put, um, in the other paragraph of or?
I-
So I guess it would, so I guess if you do and, so it would not apply to this one and this one, so they don't have to, that one, to me, says it does not apply to the owner or, and the occupant, like, not at all.
And I agree with Doug, as a landlord, I don't want one of my tenants-
Right.
-getting a permit to do something without my, in fact, I've got it in my lease, they can't paint, they can't lift their wiring, plumbing, you know, without my permission.
I guess most of the time, most of the time, uh, a, uh, person that has rainhouses is gonna do it when they're-
Should you touch it again?
But like, what that is, you know?
I guess most of the time, most of the time, that when, when somebody has rainhouses, their work is gonna be done when their house is empty anyway, right?
But what they're talking about, though, is like a lot of that, is like, if I rent from Burke, and my faucet, if his faucet's leaking, do I get to change that out? Do I, you're, you know, or-
It is that, it's that part of the business.
But, but if I call Burke, Burke says, "Hey, you changed it out," you mean, that, you're all right.
But when it comes to a permit, there's no permit required.
You shouldn't have to mess with that.
Yeah, regardless, for something like that.
Yeah, if you change that back, if you change that, any minor repairs, a tenant cannot change, uh-
It's in there.
What?
It's in there, the minor repair.
It's in there. It's in the day before, it's in the page before.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, the second one contradicts, if you read the whole paragraph, it contradicts the first one.
Personally, I just assume that, say, the property owner. Who else is gonna make, well, there are leases, like, commercial leases, that require the tenant to make the whole repairs.
Mayor, I agree with that, 100 percent. And guys, I'm sorry, I, I'm having some connection issues from time to time. So if you're asking me a question, I'm not responding, it's probably because I'm not hearing it. But yes, Mayor, I would agree with that, that owner, rather than owner and occupant, because occupant implies, you know, someone that would be renting.
Doug, would that be contradictory to a commercial lease that was a triple net lease where the leasing-
But this says, "Single family," this says, "Single family."
This is just, "Single fam-", okay, okay. I think it just needs to say owner, so.
We've got good tenants, Bert.
Huh?
We've got good tenants, if they're gonna try and fix something.
What?
Both tenants, one left a finger.
Remember you're being recorded.
Yeah, I'm not staying in that. There's a gray area there, Richard, whether they know how to fix what they're trying to fix, or they don't know how to fix what they're trying to fix. I think it's a little darker gray.
What else?
Tiffany, there is one thing that I forgot to let everyone know. The way this code is written, the way we've written this language, is that when the state updates to the newer codes, that yours will automatically update to that. So right now, the state is at the 2015 International Building Code, you know, Residential Code, Plumbing Code, electrical's different. But the governor has signed to get the process in motion to go to the 2018 codes. And since the governor's signed that, we don't know the, the date yet of when that will be implemented. But, but typically, when they do that this time of year, it, it makes the switch to the new code usually effective November 1st. But like I said, we've written this, this ordinance language so that it will update as the state updates.
I guess the other thing you need to talk about the whole sidewalk?
That's in the next one.
Oh, that's the next one? Okay.
Okay. Richard, you got any? Earl?
Yeah, my deal is, I can't approve it till I actually read it myself and, and see what's actually in it to me, you know. I can't say, I'm, oh, I'd rather table this and say, "Hey, let me read this." I just don't see how I can prove it when I just got this in to me.
It's, it's been on, of course, I know you're new to the board, it's been on the town website for how long?
Well, I know I got my permit, I know I got my permits.
Year and a half.
I know I got my permits in December, and that man right there told me that, you know, way different things than what this is saying. That, uh, you know, uh, about my deal, it's just like this sidewalk deal we're fixing to talk about. He told me that if I didn't, if I would've got my permit starting next year, I would have to put a sidewalk in front of my house. So you're telling me this is changed? We've had this on here for a year and a half, this ain't the same one that I have in my house right now.
No, because you were on the other code, this hasn't been adopted, this has been on the website for review, but it's not been adopted.
To review.
But, you know, that's what I'm saying, that's how, you know, I can't, to me, I can't pass it, I can't, you know, out of the table and, and let me have a chance to read it. You know, they sit in there an hour before here, and they've already made changes to it, you know? And how many of us on this board have read this?
I would like to- That's typically how the process works, but, um, I, if there's a misunderstanding, any permits that were pulled in the past aren't affected by this.
What?
It's, it's only after this is adopted and put into place that, you know, permits after would be affected by this code. So any project that has an active permit now, or an active development application, um, that's already in the process, goes under what was currently, what was the law at the time it was, it was applied for?
Here's, here's the way, I guess I'm kinda looking at it, we can pass a half cent, uh, sales tax on the town, we can all go grocery shopping, and we won't give a flip. We need that, we need that groceries or whatever we buy. This right here, you don't know it till you need it. You know, you wanna go do an addition to your house, and all of a sudden, two years ago, these guys, we sit here and approve something on the board, and all of a sudden, you get hit with the, you know, a $1,500 or $2,000 permit for you to do something to your house. So that's just me, I think, as board members, we ought to be able to, you know, we ought to read these and understand, because they might have, I haven't.
I would like 30 days to look at it, because I did not know about the changes coming, and I am an active builder.
What changes?
I mean, granted, I don't spend any time booking the town website, but I follow changes with IDC and IRC, and I follow the code changes. But these are not, these may be foundation on the code, we can't keep up with every municipality. I would like 30 days so I could look at it.
This has been on the website, because we did have public hearings, we've had these presented to the planning board over a year and a half ago. And there's even, um, we went through page by page by page with the planning board.
Was the recent board approval by the planning board, was that something recent?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't even know that they were having a meeting. Usually I'm notified of planning board meetings, I didn't even know they had one.
Could you send out the email to our, off the planning board?
All right, I would, I would, there.
When was that meeting?
It was today at 5:30.
5:30, see, uh, I'd have been if I'd known about that.
Yeah.
It was-
I would have also-
It was all on the, posted, just like the rest of them have been.
On the front of the window?
Well, I just-
Yeah, you kind of don't have to look in the front window. It wasn't on the hall, but Hennessy.
But, um- No, I didn't get it. Um, also, a year and a half ago, we did post it out there for public hearing, and that was put in the newspapers, it was posted all around town, about the public hearings for this with the planning board. And nobody, nobody showed up, because even Doug made comment that he was really concerned that nobody was showing up.
Was this unanimous, Doug, by the board?
I believe this was, I didn't know.
Yes.
Were they all there?
Yes, all five.
Okay.
I'll have to say that, uh, no other community have I ever done as extensive of public notification and process as what we've done here in Hennessy. And, you know, that's fine, if that's what needs to be done, that's fine. But part of it was, you know, meetings were scheduled and meetings were canceled, and, and, and yet it was there for public review. And with the exception of comments from staff, we really have never heard anything from the public, including the public open house where, where we were there and available, in addition to the hearings, um, and all with it. So, you know, if, if you want to table this for another 30-day review, I, I, you know, I'm fine with that. But understand, we have done that time and time again to get here today.
I agree, and I am not interested in tabling it for 30 days. The-
You got it, Bert, okay.
Just a second, Jay. The planning board has approved it, they have recommended that we approve it, that is their job. I, I think we need to take action on it, because just like Doug said, it has been postponed and postponed and postponed. And Jay, did you have a comment?
This has been an interesting year and a half, and, yeah, I could plead ignorance to this, but when the county, for instance, when Kingfisher County puts out bids, we'll get a call from the county commissioner's office telling us, "Hey, did you know about this coming up for a bid? Would you like to bid?" And they will mail us flying bid packets in case we miss it in public notice, because they're trying to get our input in. You know, we have, there's half a dozen of us that deal with construction issues in this town, and nobody that I know of has had any input on this. I'm not asking for a lot here, but I'd like 30 days to review it. I've already went through this one and found things in it that I'm not crazy about. I didn't even get to that yet. I mean, that was a lot to read today, considering I'm 43 yards of concrete, too. It's, I realize that's asking a lot, but 30 days isn't a lot if we find things in here that we're, it's kinda like that idea of being unsure about who's gonna work on a house or-
Well, and, and this is not set in stone, it can be changed.
There's a whole lot harder than do something after it's done than it is to, you know, be cautious in there. What's the hurry on what we're doing anyway?
Yeah, I agree.
It's been a year and a half, it's not really been-
But what's, what's the hurry?
But that's the point, Bert, it's been a year and a half, what's another month, you know? I have no problem extending it 30 days. We're here for the citizens, we have two citizens here who's concerned. What's 30 days?
Will this have to go back to the planning board?
It, it would not, unless there are significant changes. My recommendation would be if there were significant changes, that you would take it back through the planning commission. The one thing that you have to understand is Title IX is really not the purview of the planning commission. Title X, new Title X is, because that's the planning and subdivision, um, section, zoning, planning, subdivision. But, but Title IX is building code, floodplain ordinance, all of that, which is not, um, you know, that's not necessarily the purview of planning commission. We just kinda took it before them to once again have a little more of an extensive public process, um, for you. So, and like I said, I mean, I know you're saying it's another 30 days, but, but folks, it's been 30 days, it's been 30 days, it's been 30 days, it's been 30 days. And, uh, you know, we've posted it time and time again for the public to know. Now, this is not a bid, we're not going out there trying to get people to come in and give us a price. So what do we do? We post it on the website, we, we've run ads in the past, we've posted it with all of the requirements that were supposed to be done by the state, and all. It, it, you know, it's your decision on how you wanna do this, but once again, it, it's, you're saying it's another 30 days, but we've already gone through eight months of 30 days.
What, uh, what concerns me is that we postponed 30 days, and then there's questions about it. Then we're gonna postpone while it's redrafted, and we're right back into the same cycle that we're in. And I have no issues if we find a section, and I, I have read most of this. I'm not opposed if we find a section that we have an issue with, that we make changes to the occupant or to the ordinance.
So when was this draft completed? What, what's final, when did you guys complete this? When was the final draft done and you said, "Here, Tiffany?"
We pulled these in November.
Huh?
We pulled these files from November.
This right here?
Mm-hmm.
So how come I got my permit, he was still saying he was reading, he was writing this up?
Because they have not been approved by the town board.
So, why are we, I mean, so they ain't been really, these ain't been set in stone or nothing?
No.
No, until they're approved by the, by the town board and we post in the newspaper that the ordinance has been passed, then they will become effective.
And then all the, I mean, how come we haven't missed, I mean, has everybody read these and all this stuff for eight months ago, why are we finding mistakes in here today?
I think they were kind of minor, yes.
Typos, you know?
You know, where the original wanted.
What do you mean, the original one?
Well, I'm saying is, if they're typos or whatever, I mean-
You want the original, original one from back to 2007?
Why, why are we all, if, if these been done for eight, nine months, why are we finding, all of a sudden, finding mistakes in here that should've been caught from the day one, that they were wrote up?
They're not mistakes, though.
And/or is a mistake, whether you like it or not.
It's not a mistake, it's an interpretation.
It's an interpretation thing, and it-
Just the, the planning board wants to see it interpreted differently. And like I said, I wanna see it interpreted differently as well.
I know, like, you go tag a car, and you put Harold Shaw and/or Burke Wrights. And I die, you get that car.
Exactly.
But if I put Harold Shaw and Burke Wrights, now you don't get that car.
You retain your half, that's correct.
So that's what I'm saying, and/or makes a big difference.
Here's why I would ask that you look at it, and you can take this for what it's worth, this is past president of the firm, say, home builders, it's president, being a home builder. The experience I have, when I view this, I look at it differently than somebody that's on the planning board that doesn't build houses for a living, or is not a general contractor. So a set of eyes from me, my, I might not see anything that I find objectionable at all. I don't do remodels and all this stuff, but I am probably as knowledgeable about the building code as anybody in this town. You know, I, I follow this, we have to follow it. But I mean, it's your, it's your deal, 30 days to me, what's a hurry? I mean, I'm the only person right now with active permits open, I believe.
No, there's, it's probably five.
Scotty, did you say you had 30 days?
So, I mean, it's males, building-
Not actually building homes, but there's actually five open building permits.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we've got, we've got three of them, so, I mean, what's hurry?
What?
No, not counting those ones you just turned in. So that would be eight.
What, Scotty and Jay, what, since you're the only two here from the public that concern this, this agenda item, what is your, um, objection with the code, with it, the way it's, I mean, have you seen something in here that you totally object to?
I haven't been through that one yet, that's why I said I would like the chance to go through it, it's, so-
What, and which one's which? Have you got 10 in your lap?
I did, I read this one because I thought I-
I was read 10, but he hasn't written 9.
You know, I, I guess I'm a whole, I'm a little myopic on my reading, but I literally thought we were dropping this and picking this up. And so I basically looked at this, and I said, "Well, I'll get to this and see what we dropped," and I, I focused on this when I had time. And so my attention was focused on this.
And that's 10?
This is 10.
Oh, yeah.
Because we're, you know, I'm heading with what Scotty's doing up there on the north end of town, and so this was my primary focus. I found in this issues that we have about, like, lot size and square footage and, and stuff like that on, on lots. And I think that bears consideration.
Those were taken directly from our previous book.
I agree. But the minimum lot size, for a house to be built, is 7,000 square feet, and I'm sorry, my lot's over there on the Ozber, don't come, come close. But yet that fact was adopted in 1981 on your signature, and those lots do not need-
Don't say that, it makes me sound old.
Good boy, Mayor. Those, those lots do not meet the requirement of our current codes right now, so everything-
So, you know, obviously, the non-conforming, and, and, you know, we're not talking about Title X right now. So, you know, obviously, the non-conforming, and, you know, we're not talking about Title X right now. So, but obviously, the non-conforming section of the code would apply to that, because those are legal, existing lots that would fall under non-conforming. So, maybe, you know, if you've got a 5,000-square-foot lot, and it's a legal lot, then that's a legal, non-conforming lot. Non-conforming people often will use the word grandfathered, so it's, it's a grandfathered law.
And, and not, not worrying too far to point, but if somebody chose to object, though, that non-conformity could be viewed as, "Well, if it doesn't conform, we may change our mind." You know, because we've all been there before. It doesn't mean anything set in stone. Like you said, you can revise it. You know, Doug, how many times, if you look at the building codes, that you've seen entire paragraphs struck, struck out? That's what they call it, striking outlines, and then they replace it with something else. And we go through this over and over, and then every, every three months, Construction Industries Board, who I'm very familiar with those guys, they come along and they have something entirely new to lay down on us. So, we follow.
Sure.
And so, you understand my hesitancy, that I want things in black and white. I want to know exactly where we sit, where we stand.
And just as you've said, as, as items come to bear that maybe this is an issue, that's when the Construction Industry Board looks at it and makes changes. But that's why they go and they adopt a new code from time to time. And like I said, they're going from the 2015 to the 2018. And that's exactly what Tiffany has said we'll do. Yes, once these get implemented, we may find a speed bump every now and then, or the conditions of the town, the community building, you know, we may all be in autonomous cars in, in, in two years. So, those are things that would be updated and changed as those problems come up. And, you know, nothing is ever perfect. And if you're looking for it to be perfect and set in stone today, it's not going to happen. There will have to be changes and modifications. But this is the best that we've been able to pull together for you through your public process and the comments that we have gotten fed back from your town, your community, to get us where we are today. That's why, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be upset about this, but, you know, when I'm hearing, "We need 30 more days" or whatever, if that's what the council wants, then by God, let's do that. But understand, we've done this again and again and again and again, and we're here now. And, you know, either stand up and take leadership on how you want to move forward, or, you know, or we'll be in this cycle continually, because life changes every day. I think this last year has proven that to all of us.
I've never heard of this yet.
Uh, yeah, you have, because when you came on the board...
You guys were trying to get it passed before I got on here.
No, we were not. That's why we have waited until you've been on here a couple of months.
Yeah, but I know, like, right in that one meeting that I went back in there, that deal, made comments with, you know, Harold's going to look like Harold gets this pass before, uh, you know, been on here the first month. I, I know when I got my permit, you can look the permits up, he still was writing these up as soon as he finishes these up. So, I know that, either that or I'm, I'm...
We were making changes.
So, they weren't approved? I mean, they weren't.
They're still not approved.
They're still, we're still making changes.
They're, they're not approved, and they're still not, they weren't rubbed up in January.
Until you approve this...
How can you read this when he was still writing them up in December? He was still, he was still writing these up in December. Yes, he was. Look for my data, my permit. He was making changes to them, so he was still writing them up.
But the original ones have been on our website.
They can't be. Them can't be our originals when he was writing these up.
Okay.
Harold, they're on there. Tiffany, they were also at the library, I believe.
Yes, they were at the library.
But, but, but for a year and a half, when the man was still writing them up in December.
He was not writing them up and revising them.
What was he doing to them? Oh, revising them.
But these are going to be revised until you guys approve them.
So, okay.
And then, I mean, what you're seeing...
Based on the comments we received.
Yes.
Um, and all, which is public process, um, and all...
I mean, that's why we're all American. I mean, we don't have, we live in America. We all don't have to agree on everything, so...
If I would have known, you know, granted, I missed it, if I'd known it, I bet Tiffany and Richard and, and Quinn might know that I wouldn't have been here, because I usually, I pay attention to this stuff. I have yet to have a code feather on a home yet. I've yet to have a code, I've yet to have a red tag in 20-some years I've been doing this. And that's not because of ignorance, because we pay, we play by the rules. I would still like 30 days to look at this, but if you don't, you know, I don't have a voice here, really. I said, "What's the hurry?" Just, you know, this has been a COVID year. This sounds like Nancy Pelosi saying, you know, "If I got this pass this, we'll, he'll tell you what's in it after we pass it." Well, I haven't had a chance to read it, and it does affect some of the stuff that we do.
And I don't like the sidewalk board. That's just...
Well, we get to that.
Yeah, I wasn't worried.
We can get to that. That's a change that we've made, too.
Like, it's still, but it's going to be in there later?
It's, there's a change in there that I will tell you about.
Okay, well, we'll get to that.
So, we can continue. I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance 381 as presented today. Second roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
No.
Harold?
No.
Richard?
No.
When is our special meeting?
July 29.
Okay. I'm going to recommend that we put this on the agenda for special meeting on July 29. That will give everybody...
And if anybody has anything, can they come to me?
Three weeks, two weeks, three weeks?
Then we can try to get, I can get with Doug, and we can try to get some of this hammered out before...
Is everybody okay with the, with July 29?
I would like to make some suggestion. You know, we post these things on the front board and they're on the town hall, town, uh, board. But we can announce it more than once and maybe two or three times and do it on All About Hannity.
We do.
We do, Richard. The thing is, is we, and it's probably no excuse, I'll take, I mean, I should have made sure... I mean, we were here until 6 o'clock, 6:30 last night. We were here until 9 o'clock the night before. I was here all day Monday for the holiday. We have been trying to close out year-end, start up the brand-new year, do bank reconciliations, and Shelley's been out all week.
July 4th holiday.
Yes, and so we only had a day and a half to get ready for coordinating.
July 4th holiday.
No, but...
Well, you know, July 4th will screw up a week, because people, not the town board, but, but, when you, when you're doing a project, you're relying on other people, and you can't pull, they're taking vacations before and after a holiday, but, you know, that, that's my professional experience. I'm not talking about the town board, so I can understand that you're like...
But we normally, I mean, our common practice is the paper and Angie and them, they have asked for copies of all agendas, and so we normally get them all out to, to them, agendas and all...
People in the agendas I've lost.
So, that is common practice.
It might be like the county commissioner's, if we have a, if we have an area involving construction to send out a letter, uh, just to suggest.
I think county probably has more employees than we do, but, um, I mean, they can put in a request, a written request, if this is anything that we have, they can ask for, they can ask for a copy of agendas every month, just like the paper asks.
Well, I, you know, under the open meeting law, we're required to post, there it is, post our agendas and such, and that's been happening so long that I, I mean, to me, I think people have an interest in what we're discussing. Those, those are after the look on All About Hannity. I don't know if you all, you don't run our agendas, I don't think, in the paper, but...
No, just the announcement of a meeting, and that I know is to be there for the...
So, um, the motion has been made and passed to table this. Is it within everybody's agreement to place it? I would just like to do it on the special meeting, so that we don't clog up the August meeting with tons of time on, on this again, that we did it this, what time will our special meeting be? Will it be an evening meeting?
I think so.
Let's, let's try to do an evening meeting, so people aren't rushed to get to work.
Yeah, Ben's expected to be here at 7:00.
Okay.
So, what do you all have?
No, I would make a, I mean, I don't think I need a motion on that, place that on the agenda. Okay, okay, so, item D, I already read that. If anybody requests, I'll read it again, but I, uh, if we're tabling C, I recommend...
Can I tell them what changed?
Yes, you sure can. Sorry, I see you ahead.
That's okay. Um, I know, Bert, you had a question about recreational vehicle parks.
I did.
About they include, like, public restrooms and different things. It has the word "may," so it doesn't say "shall," it says "may," so that is optional.
Okay.
Just to clarify that. That is on page 20.
I read that as a recreational vehicle park had to have space for tent camping, and I didn't think we wanted to do that, but if it's "may," it would be optional, so a person couldn't invent a tent camping.
Maybe just the fence. There's only a couple. Oh, um, on medical marijuana, on page 89, um, it talks about separation from other uses. We put in here, or it was put in here, any library, museum, whatever, but we have to change that to where it's just public school.
As state law.
Yes, ask for state law. So, he's making that change.
It can only be the school?
Yes, it can only be the school, the public school. And it has to be the public school front doors. It can't be like their gymnasium in the back or their property line. It has to be their front doors.
You know the song, "We don't smoke marijuana in this cogie"? Well, now you can. On the courthouse steps or whatever it said.
Um, on chapter 11, um, 10-11-1, page 98. When a person gets, does a preliminary plot, and we approve that, then, um, they, they put together, you know, they have their sewer lines and their water lines, and before they're supposed to draw a permit, they have to have all of that inputted into the ground, and then we do a final plot. Well, or we approve a final plot, which the final plot, when we approve the final plot, they're accepting all of their utilities, all their streets and all of that. Well, in place of them putting in, like, the complete water line, the complete sewer line, or the street, if they put a bond up, um, then they can, um, like, draw their first permit on that property.
So, the ability to place a surety bond or just a bond, um, some people call surety bonds, um, that would be, uh, and essentially, the way that bond would be established would be, the applicant's engineer would provide a cost estimate on what that construction would be. It would be reviewed by the city's engineer, who at this time is Cowan, and, and, you know, to say, "Yes, this is good, this number's good," or "No, this number isn't." And then what we would use is 120% would be what would be required for the bond. Why do we say 100%, or 120% is because if you end up having to finish this project and do it, it may not be this year. It may be three, four years down the road. So, that 20% covers any increase in inflation on that. So, where hopefully the town would not be out of funds if they, if they had to get that, if they had to go ahead and complete the work.
Sure, 20% would work this year.
Is that what's on?
You have any questions on that?
And I apologize. We, we talked about that. We had it, and, and somewhere along the line, I forgot to get it in this draft.
Okay, now, we're going to go over to streets, page 118. Or no, not there, sorry. We're going to go over to sidewalks, 120.
I'm sorry, what page?
120.
Page 120.
122.
120.
Okay.
Um, under sidewalks required, it's going to be, um, he's going to change, or he's going to put in there that the sidewalks shall be constructed on both sides of the streets unless the planning commission waves or modifies this requirement with the rest of that language. But that's only going to apply to residential and commercial zone.
What was the other zoning that you were going to put in?
It applied to everything. So, we're going to actually put the words in there, "commercial and residential zoning."
What else is there agriculture?
So, it would not apply to industrial.
So, the example of that would be if somebody bought the old, uh, property down on 7th Street, Main Street, that, uh, I'm a Watson living, and if somebody bought that corner and put laundry in that end, then sidewalk ordinance would apply there, obviously.
The sidewalks are getting...
I mean, that's not, that's, I don't...
Not necessarily.
The sidewalks only implemented when you're, when you're building a, a, a street or building a, um...
Development.
Development.
So, this is, we're only talking about development here?
Yes.
Since we...
If, if, if you have an existing infill lot, then, you know, no, that infill lot would not be considered. But if you're coming in and you're doing a new development project, where you're designing and building a new subdivision, yes, then that would apply. And there's also an alternative in there, where you could ask for a special exception to do a, a different type of design. Say, um, you know, "I want to design this, this subdivision to where it does not have curb and gutter with sidewalks, um, in there, but I want to come and do a subdivision that may have borrow, or, or, um, you know, like rain gardens or, or what they call bioswales for my street drainage, and I want to come in and provide an alternative trail system that meets the same intent as the sidewalk." Then the planning commission would have the purview to review that and say, "Yes, we'll allow that in this case," but it would be through a special exception process. I'm sorry, I said planning commission. I meant the board of adjustments would have that ability.
Right now, we only have three, three potentially undeveloped plots that, or not undeveloped, or accepted residential plots. It won't apply to any of those.
Correct, because they're already planted.
Because potentially, what's over there in Saddleback, what's in red glow.
Saddleback has not been pla, I mean, what's left in Saddleback has not been planted.
So, if somebody were to buy what's left, then it would...
I thought the church bought all of what's left.
They did, but if they was to ever...
But if somebody were to buy that now, if they chose to not develop it, then the sidewalk issue then would apply. That would be...
Yes.
I mean, sidewalks to where?
Yeah, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but is that not a federal ADA requirement?
No, there, there are some different requirements related to ADA, but there's nothing at a national-wide level that says that you need to go ahead and, and have this. Now, I'll take that back. You know, if you've got an existing development and the sidewalks do not comply with ADA, then yes, those would have to be brought up, and then your town has to have a transition plan to show how it's going to do that. And that's something that the feds will come and audit from time to time on and all. But, yeah, if it's a brand-new development, let me, one, one of your questions would be, now, say, and I think you called... But yeah, if it's a brand-new development, let me, uh, one, one of your questions would be, now, say, and, and I think you called the development Saddle, was it Saddleback Bridge?
Yeah.
Or Saddleback?
Saddleback.
Okay, so if that's an existing development and say, phase three of it is not done, and you were to come in and buy phase three and say, hey, I wanna redesign this to different size lots or something different, then yes, the subdivision, because you're gonna replat, you're gonna redesign, you may do a, update a P U V, then they, then those sidewalk requirements would, would come into effect.
But now, if they use the preliminary, um, phase three plat-
That was already approved.
That was already approved, then they would not.
They would not, yeah.
See, there you go, I'm thinking.
Now-
I, as an advocate for, for pedestrian and bicycle, uh, you know, I would say, I think, I, I would, as planner, strongly recommend that you do that, but it, it would not be a requirement of your code.
Well, and I think this sidewalk is put in here so that we will be eligible to go for the ODOT grant.
Yes, and also it helps you-
And that money is like up to two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
You're talking about the answer to the question.
The, the ODOT, you can use them for sidewalks, you can use them for all different types of things, as long as it-
Yeah.
It's like-
Tiffany's talking about what they currently are calling a TAP grant.
TAP grant, yeah.
And, and yes, that would, you're going, this, this is something that would come into play with TAP or whatever they call the future transportation bill projects.
Those, those are, they give out large sums of money on those.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, but we gotta get our stuff lined up to be able to-
I can't recall, Tiffany, but I, I think I have somewhere in my house, it's from that grant workshop. Those sidewalk grants go from three, correct me if I'm wrong, three-hundred thousand, I've seen them, three-hundred thousand to five-hundred, half a million.
I don't know about that, I know, I've seen some up to three-hundred, so.
In your, in your small towns, they might be a town of six-hundred people and they get a grant for three-hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks.
When I was with the city prior, we got one for five-hundred thousand, um, for bike trails and all. Um, the town of Shoto, uh, had one for over six-hundred thousand.
And they're eighty-twenty.
It depends on what, what ODOT releases for those opportunities.
Okay. But for right now, everything going north of fifty-one, we're done.
For your industry?
If, if it's zoned and stays zoned, industrial, um, yeah, that would, that would be the situation.
Were you done with ten and eleven, Tiffany?
Yes.
Now, ten and eleven is only dealing with stuff that is in, in the future, is that right? As we understand it?
I think we only have ten and eleven.
I'm sorry, I missed it, I missed it.
Ten and eleven are only dealing with the future?
Correct. Like the future, like any permits, like anything done after these approval, is that what you're asking?
This is only for whatever's coming in the future.
Correct.
But not for anything that's like, what Scott's already approved.
Correct.
So this is just like if we find, if we decide to build another market, it's just-
Yeah.
On page, uh, at- Page one sixteen. And under ten twelve, one dash two submitting plans. And I'm assuming, Doug, that these are the actual plans that somebody would be building from, construction blueprints?
One different page. Okay, what, ten dash what?
Ten, twelve.
Page one sixteen.
Ten, twelve, one, that, one point two.
Okay, that's on our one fifteen, okay.
Let, let me get to that really quick, just to make sure, um, because, yeah, some of it relates to zoning.
But I mean, this is, says construction plans and procedures.
Yes, yeah, so that-
Are these plans dealing with the plat, or are these plans dealing with the structures going in?
The construction plans would be structures going in.
No, are they sure, are, these are not for, 'cause this is chapter twelve of ten, isn't this for the, um, for plating and, and stuff like that, the construction plans?
Well, on the construction plan, under twelve, the construction plans, that's after the plating. So, you know, when I say it's, it's what's going in, but it would also potentially include your grading, so your civil, your civil work on this.
But it would not apply to, say, I buy a, a, a lot, an empty lot over here on Oklahoma Street that's already platted, it would not apply to that.
No, 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 that's, that's when the plans under the building code fall into play. This is related to subdivision development.
So ten, twelve, one, two doesn't have anything to do with actual structures, or it does?
Well, I, it depends on what types, typically what we do is when we receive these, is it includes your, your grading, but it may also include, you know, your curb, your gutter, and sometimes we do see building footprints that come with this. Now, now, there are projects that we also will, at this time, start to bring in construction drawings so that they're being reviewed and looked at at the same time. And why do we do that at this level? To try to move this along quicker, to get you to permit sooner.
The only buildings that possibly would be in this is if, and what he's talking about is a building that is, um, you're getting, trying to get a building permit before you get the final plat approved.
I wasn't actually focusing on that nearly as much as I am language, because in the future, we don't know if, if, there again, we don't know how far we could annex property or open up some more future development. I'm not liberty to say, but we're talking to a company that wants to come in and possibly set up a factory and build windows, and that's not part of Scotty's thing, that's something else. Here's my question. Plans shall be prepared by professional engineer. The word is "shall," and "shall," as we all know, there's dealt with federal code, means you will do it. When we engage a professional engineer to draw building plans, then we'll see ten or twenty thousand dollars on a building vanish and it won't come back to town.
That's not-
So that's a state law, that's a state law. When you're building a project that big, your architectural and engineering statutes come into play.
Hold on, Doug, we're getting confused here.
Yeah.
He's talking about building a building, like putting in a building permit for like a, a factory or putting in a building permit for a building. What we're talking here, these construction plans are for like when, when-
So we're talking-
Keystone sent me the water, sewer, drainage streets, that's what this is.
I wanted that clarification, I wanna know that this is what we're talking about.
Yes.
Because, uh, you know, there's, Enid has a new plan now in place where if you do not have a sealed architect, your house plans get rejected. Well, that means there's people that, you know, they don't wanna spend eight grand for a set of house plans. And construction practices are covered well in the building code for residential homes. You don't, I mean, home designers draw great homes, they don't have to be an architect. I guess that's outside of a few other little things, I guess that's all my comments about that, and I did read this.
Yeah, with, with the codes that we've written, the only time when that comes into play is when it basically follows the state requirement. So when you hit the threshold that requires the engineering and, and architectural requirements that's in the state licensing and, and submittal requirements, that's when it comes into play with anything we've written.
I, I would almost beg to differ that with the crap going on with the marijuana licensing and the fire marshal's involvement now, I'm, we're seeing, we're seeing work stop orders going down for two and three thousand square foot projects. We're seeing the fire marshal issue fines of a thousand dollars a day. We're seeing fire marshal building permits going out here where people are, rather, they would pick a municipality to build in rather than be out in the county because of the, of the, the fire, the state legislature has picked the fire marshal to go out and do this. Well, Doug, I, I, granted, I've heard the ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen thousand square foot rule, but I know for a fact, four thousand is the threshold now where they're starting to get on us. Four thousand feet's not very big, guys, PSC building up here, those warehouses in that project that we built, that was fifty-four thousand square feet.
And, and I guess I'd say, I feel your pain, um, there are a lot of communities that I work with that have called up and have us do fi- you know, I'm not trying to sell IBTS, but IBTS does the fire review for them because the state fire marshal's office has come along and shut them down, and we all know what kind of the length of review process and all. So state fire marshal is completely different from anything, but like I said, anything that we have written in these codes that are before you tonight relates to those architectural standards and not what the state fire marshal's office is, is doing on their own right now. And, yeah, I mean, if the state statutes change to where that threshold goes down, you know, that's something, you, we, we can be more restrictive as towns and communities in Oklahoma, we cannot be less restrictive than the state. So if the state decides to change that threshold, that's gonna be beyond us, we'll have to follow and, and, and do what they tell us to do.
And we're actively working on trying to change that threshold, that's, that can be adapted later. The only other thing I saw in this section that I, would concern me is it said that if there's ever a question between what the state requires and what the county requires or what the town requires, the more restrictive, whatever's more restrictive is what's gonna go down as law. And it was my understanding that that's not the way it's supposed to work, but maybe I'm wrong. I thought we can't, you can't have an ordinance passed in a town that is more restrictive than, say, the state.
That's the opposite. You can, you cannot be less restrictive than the state.
I didn't-
Can't be more restrictive.
Except for when it comes to marijuana.
Except when it comes to marijuana.
I won't talk about marijuana, so.
Well, we're not building growhouses in, in town, so.
Yeah.
Well, we did have IBTS, we did write a letter to the state fire marshal, and we do our own fire inspections, um, state fire marshal.
We, we did that on, we did that on process of plan.
They don't have any jurisdiction in our town.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance three eighty-two as presented. I'll second it.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Harold?
No.
Richard?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to pass it.
Is it also three, you can?
Just, you just-
Just.
Well, once again, thank you and thanks for your time. Tiffany, please get with me, um, on these edits, I'm gonna have to sign off.
Okay.
But also, on your special meeting, I'll need to check calendars, 'cause I'm not sure of my availability.
Okay, that's fine.
Where's your kitty cat? Where's your kitty cat?
Everyone thinks-
Hey, where's your kitty cat?
Doug?
Yes.
Where's your kitty cat? Is it you, this thing? There you go.
Sorry.
They know this, they lay on the keyboard, that gets their attention.
Tiffany, this virtually, and all with it, so thanks, so thanks for being patient with my cat, too, so, bye now.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. I make a motion to have the severity ability declare an emergency on three eighty-two. So I can, right, oh?
It's, it's declaring it an emergency.
Just so it goes into effect on rep publication.
And we only have to publish it by title. Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Harold?
No.
Richard?
And what does this do?
This, this attaches the emergency clause.
Okay, then what does the emergency clause do?
It, it allows it, once it publishes in the paper, then it becomes effective.
Immediately upon publication.
Immediately upon publication.
And we don't have to publish that.
And, and you don't have to publish the whole thing.
Right.
We can publish by title.
Yeah, I don't know, they say emergency, I don't know what it's doing, it, for so, what it's doing is we don't have to publish the whole-
Yes, but also it takes effect once it's published, so like it'll publish next Thursday.
Otherwise, it would take thirty days.
Yes, so it'll be affecting next Thursday, or it would take thirty days before it became effective. Yes.
We publish all this, Barb's gonna go open a newspaper tomorrow.
I don't know why they do that, 'cause, yeah.
Katie, that's a yes.
Okay, item E is discussion of possible action on resolution number, it says three eighty-three?
No.
No, it's twenty twenty-one dash zero four, it's a resolution.
Can you say that again, please?
Twenty twenty-one dash zero four.
Twenty twenty-one dash zero?
Four.
Thank you. Discussion of possible action on resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero four, a resolution adopting a new fee schedule for filing and processing zoning, order of adjustment, land division development, application request, building inspection services, floodplain development, and for providing other floodplain administration, planning, and inspection services for properties within the county, Hennessy, Keene Fisher County, Oklahoma. Stacy, we're almost to you, bear with us.
I would, you know, that we table this, 'cause you tabled this and some of this has to do with this, so.
Do you need a list of what the changes are proposed?
It's just the resolution, and, I mean, it doesn't have what the old ones were.
What do we change?
What do you mean?
One said discussion of fees, are they going up or down?
In the current code, um, it had these sets, so we started to do it by resolution, and plus, we're doing it, like, your construction, it's based on, for like your reviews and stuff, it's based on square foot, but then your inspection fees is whatever the, um, company that we're using charges.
So this is that variable that when you guys have discussed hiring an in-house inspector, then, then that fee schedule would be changing?
Correct.
Correct. Unless you go to a third-party person to do plan review, for instance.
I mean, it would allow us to, to go with, you know, different people for plan review, different people for, um-
And plan review could be on an as needed basis as opposed to?
What do you mean, I was saying that?
Are you, I think I'm kind of following you, are you saying that, that the plan review would be?
Here's my thinking on that, Bert, and I don't know if we, if you and I have ever talked about it, but for instance, I had one house designed for the Osburn addition, and we have the ability, by literally flipping the switch on the computer, we can flip it from left to right, or we can flip it from front to back, but essentially, it doesn't change. So Tiffany made the allowance, or Tiffany or, or Doug, no, it wasn't Doug, it's Mike. Mike said, "I'll charge you one fee to review it, two hundred dollars." And then, so my permits in the Osburn addition now are seven hundred dollars as opposed to nine hundred, but I'm building the same essential house.
But you're building the exact same plan.
Essentially, but then, you know, as Tiffany pointed out today, well, there's a little difference in a couple of these. That's because as we built the first two, then we saw changes that we need to make to change the wall length to make it line up better with trussing and raptors and stuff like that. The plan essentially didn't change, it's just modified, all right? You could say, well, that requires a new plan review. My question about the plan review was, if we were building the PSC office up there where we have agri's concerns, you know, here's the fire marshal, are you fifty feet from an exit door, are you, do we have office space? That is a legitimate use of the plan review. But if Barb wanted to build a new house up her corner over here and she buys a house plan, if that house plan is, is, you know, been done by an architect or whoever, and she buys a plan, it meets the square footage of the lot requirement, I don't think we, we should pay for a plan review because the questions we get back on these plan reviews, they say, "What species of lumber are you using?" And that's not my fault.
I have a number of species of lumber.
I have, I have a whole list of, of questions.
From Hennessy?
And from IBTS, that's the stuff, they'll say, what-
'Cause I usually get these questions.
They'll say, "What size lumber are we using to do this, this, and this?" And if we follow the plan as designed, we don't, the plan review is-
Dave, I always get the plan reviews, um, if they need more information, they send them to me and then I give them to the individuals, and they've never asked for type of wood, any specifics like that.
Harold? Yeah, they do. I sent, I sent my plans to Doug.
I sent, I sent my plans to Doug and Charlie and the other guy. They want to know how I was gonna put my wood, my rafters, all this stuff. Tell me I can't use two-by-sixes, you know, they gotta do this, gotta do that. And I asked them what's their opinion to them, and if my ceiling falls in on me, it's my own fault, I built the house.
The thing is.
But, but hold on. If it had read the, if it had read the deal, then it seemed that there was considerable ceilings in there, and so I could have ran two-by-sixes. You know, then they want to know the deal of the lumber, what grade of lumber I was gonna run. When it comes to my plumbing, they want to know, am I lines we're gonna be running into the house? You know, one inch, I'm gonna run three-quarter lines to everywhere, drop down to everywhere, kitchen sink, blah, blah, blah. You know, drop down to half inch, come out. And they wanted all that on sheets of paper, you know, and that's what he's asking.
Well, I know my, my parents built a house in nineteen sixty-eight, nine. And at that time, the thickness of the copper water lines was, it was set in code that you had to have, was it L or M or?
Hard copper.
Oh, you know, way back then, but Harold, what I, what I think I'm hearing you say, when you say, this is my house, I'm gonna live in it, someday that house is gonna sell. And, you know, I think we, I think we as a town in requiring these inspections have to be diligent on protecting the public. And I'm not saying that we need to be over the top. I don't think we need to be an Edmund or an Enid, but.
But after, let me go there. After the guy that drew my blueprints and submitted them to them, they wanted that more of that detailed different information. He asked me, he said, what are they? Are they still on nineteen eighty-four guidelines on building houses? I said, I have no idea. Here's Doug's number. You know, would you call him, so that way we quit this back-and-forth stuff. Because I'm a oilfield guy, I don't know, you know, I don't know what half-inch pipe you're talking about. You know, copper, brass, and all of the half-inches, all different for me. You know, I gotta go in there and put a fitting on each one of them, make sure exactly what half-inch. But anyway, when them two got together, they left her out. If they went, because she said she gets all these changes. They got it straight with each other, that they weren't worried about what grade of board I was or what my plumbing was.
And I see what IBTS wants with this plan review. I'm just saying, I'm one of those people that don't feel like it's necessary on everything that we.
But let me ask you this, and I'm not in your profession, but if you are moving a wall to, you said something about moving a wall to better support the rafters and such?
No, I, I use truss roofs on a house because, you know, that was how I took care of Mike on his plan review. He called me up and he said, I don't like the way this is drawn. And I said, I'm using engineered trusses, and they was, oh, okay. Now, the first two houses we built, we had two trusses that were spaced close together because the span was greater than, you couldn't split, you can't put a truss that far than two feet. The length of the house was drawn at fifty-four feet, six inches. All right, I had, I called over to the truss plant, I said, hey, re-pull the plan and just pull a foot and a half. Well, that foot and a half just washed across. We didn't change a structural element of the home. All we did was say, if we're gonna have that extra truss in there, why shouldn't we just go ahead and stretch that wall out and gain fifteen square foot? Because, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
That was not a structural issue, that was not a, but a lot of times on custom homes that I build, like I'm building an acre right now, we make changes to the plan to, because the client walks in and says, I don't, you know, he's got my plan, but I don't like this wall here. All right, then it's up to us to make that call, we shouldn't have to go through the review process.
Well, and I, I want to go back to the analogy used with Barb. Is gonna build a house on her lot on Oklahoma Avenue. No, I know, but, and she buys a plan from somebody.
Yeah.
But how do we know that that somebody is a qualified architect or?
Because the plan will come, when you buy house plans, they come.
Can some scammer not stick that with a seal?
They, usually an architect's seal is always required, but the architect's seal is almost like the plan review that you're asking for. I kind of think the city's interest in that ought to stop with lots set back, and is it gonna fit the lot? It's obviously an improvement, and we want somebody to build it, we don't want somebody to pay for it.
To answer your question, those architect's plans or their blueprints, it's actually like a notary of the public, and seals are certain to them, to the architect.
And what you do is, you see, you'll see a set of plans where it says, if this plan doesn't have a red seal on it, if it's a black seal, that means it's a bootleg set of plans, and obviously, you would use it. I'm just saying, in these cases, or like in what I do, you know, I appreciate the fact that I don't have to pay for that plan review every time, but Tiffany, Tiffany brought that up today. And it's, I'm building the same essential house with, that we've adapted as we finally got to where we want it to be. Because those lots are small, and so we build essentially the same house. And so far, nobody's caught on the fact that there's five of them that are just exactly alike. You just.
I've noticed that. Well, I'm good.
But I'm trying to, I changed the roof on a couple of them, and I changed the roof illegally. We just changed truss style to make it, you see what I'm saying? That I wouldn't want to have to go through a plan review every time and have to explain myself. But we're still on the hook, because a lot of times people forget that as builders, we're on the hook for ten years. Oklahoma law says we are, if I build and Barb a new house and she lives to be a hun- oh, never mind.
Don't go there, Doug.
If I'm almost eighty, and she calls me up and says, Jay, that side of the garage has got a full crack in the floor. All right, I'm gonna be the one that has to fix it. Because Oklahoma law says we have to complete things in a working-like manner, and that our warranty is required for ten years.
And who takes that warranty over?
No, who is taking it?
Who takes that warranty over if you're no longer in business?
If you're no longer, I don't know how that actually works, because that would be a civil issue then, but generally speaking, a lawyer would come after you, I suppose, you'd have to be out of the country. But the state of Oklahoma has held the people's insurance to hold. But they're also, when you buy a builder's risk policy on a house, I think in some cases that builder's risk policy carries.
Carries liability?
You know, when you buy builder's risk, and I've heard those being stretched. I don't know. That's a question outside my purview. But if we're gonna talk about fee schedules, there again, I'd like to note what changes we're proposing.
Give me a copy.
Can he have?
Yep.
Can he have this?
You, Keith, you need one, because I have an extra up here.
Hey.
I have one on my phone.
You want one? You want a copy?
No, I don't, I don't do it very.
Okay.
I got one at home.
No, we didn't get a midnight. We're moving along.
We didn't get myself.
I don't know.
Bert, you said midnight.
No, I'm sorry, my tongue is over.
Sorry, midnight.
Said a motion to, for that.
Tiffany, you want to table it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We don't have a discussion to table. No, it's tabled. All right, item F is.
This is tabled?
Yes, it's tabled, yes.
Okay, so this will be at the next special meeting?
The reason why is because a lot of stuff on the three eighty-one ordinance that we tabled is included in this, and so we decided that we need to table that because we need to come up with approving three eighty-one before we can approve that.
Before we can approve the fees that apply in three eighty-one, we need, we would put, if we print that, we got to.
They apply in three eighty-one and three eighty-two.
Before the cart before.
But we would rather wait until we do three eighty-one before we approve the fees.
So if there was any questions about anything, or anybody any comments, concerns, thoughts?
Well, what do you ask, what do you ask?
Well, you know, for instance, like, you know, I have two grand houses, and one of them, the tree fell on the power line. We did not hook it back up because we're just using the house for storage. If I were to hook that back up, OGNES says, because we have a building inspector, we now have to have an inspector inspect the house electrically. Well, you know, does that mean he goes in the house and checks the?
No.
Or is this, he's gonna look at the meter and he says it's okay?
Here's what they did on mine. They wanted to look at the inside of the house. You know, they didn't take the deals off, they didn't do nothing like that. They just walked around, make sure that there wasn't no extension cords running from one place to the other. They just did a physical check. They didn't check nothing, like, take the lights, the covers off or nothing like that, but they did walk around the place.
What I think, what I think the answer to your question, and I may, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but you, you have done nothing but taken the service down to the outside.
I think when the storm knocked it down, it knocked the power out over there on that block on South Dunlap.
Okay.
All right, when, and when Steve came through, and we all know Steve, he came through and he just, he took the triplex down because nobody was living in seven-ten. And we had never repowered that house, but, you know, I'm thinking about it now. But, you know, there's essentially, all we're gonna do is just restore the electric line because the tree now is gone, fell on the, on the line. But do we pay, do we pay an inspection fee for this and then?
It's eighty-five dollars.
To hook, to hook, yeah, because I, the reason I was questioning you, because I did that on a house. I had the service taken down and then replaced, and I had to do, I had to do, but not in the house, not what?
Generally, the OGNES position about the electric meter is about the same as, well, not the same as ONG, but OGNES usually doesn't care what happens beyond that meter, because if they turn the power on, your house burns down.
And that's the other thing, my, my fire was out more than like five years, they, you know, it was shut off.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
So, but I think there is a stipulation in there, though, if it's only like a year or something like that, they don't have, they can turn it on, is that right?
I don't know what OGNES does, I know if they require it, it's eighty-five dollars.
Yeah, I do not understand at all what, what you just brought up, because Oklahoma natural will come in and go through your house.
But that's, that's a different deal, and you can deny them entry, but if you do, they just take your meter and they leave. But I mean, it's just, I, it's just a chance to look this over. I mean, we'd like to have a comment on it, of course, it's not a whole lot we can do about it.
Okay, my, my.
They, they come, I mean, the inspector, he comes out and he inspects the, you know, what he's done, and then he has to go and turn it into OGNES. So I think, you know, they're looking at two liability, you know, because they did the inspection.
The building Stacy's in, for instance, when it, when it was virtually destroyed, we pulled all the electric out of it, all right, we used a licensed electrician to put it back in. And then I called Charlie and said, Charlie, hey dude, when you're in town, drive up there and look. And Charlie drove by and said, yep, looks good to him.
No, I think Stacy came in and paid for the electrical inspection.
Probably, did you?
Yeah, she did.
Because I didn't have to really power it up because, because.
She did.
Flip didn't wanna, didn't wanna pay for it.
Okay. Item F, this discussion of possible action to close one hundred block of West Oklahoma one Saturday a month for farmers market as presented by Stacy Clark.
First of all, I would like to tell you guys thank you for repairing that sidewalk. There's a lot of foot traffic on that side of my building. I didn't realize how many people walk down there, so thank you for doing that. That was a nice surprise, and I know the people that park along the street appreciate it, so thank you. I would also like to thank the ladies at Town Hall for being very patient with me as a new business owner and not knowing what I'm doing, so thank you for that also. I would like to present closing the street one time of month on a Saturday from Main Street to before the alleyway, where the alleyway could still be used, and it went and blocked off the repair shop there. And I would like to do it eight o'clock in the morning to two o'clock, so it would correspond with the business hours there on Main Street, hopefully to bring some business up on Main Street on Saturdays, and to give some people the opportunity to come up with, you know, whatever they do, whether it's honey or produce or whatever anybody wants to bring up. And I haven't really, I've talked to a couple people on Hennessey United, but, well, I'm not meeting this next week, but I'm hoping it's something that the Hennessey United sponsors, and I'm learning.
Are you gonna do this here, Ron?
So I would like, this year, I would like to go, I've tried to do, I'd like to get maybe, I was talking to, maybe the last Saturday of the next three months of July, this month, next month, and then maybe September. I've looked at some other schedules for some farmers markets, and they're until September. So I don't know if it's successful this year. I would like to start earlier, maybe, and do it again next year, maybe June through September. I mean, it won't be a year-round thing. Maybe if it's successful, maybe we can do other things like, Kingfisher has started, it's called Block Thirty-four. I don't know if you guys have seen that, going through Kingfisher? And there's a gal that, well, I was talking to Chris Cameron, and they set up like that cornhole tournament, like every Saturday, this lady has events there, and they just have town activities. So maybe, hopefully, it would maybe grow into something more, I don't know. But just a proposal to start this, see how it goes, see what kind of response that we get.
Because the reason why did you want it up there in Oklahoma, why not like a block on Fuller South where that grass field?
Well, since I'm the one that's willing to do it, and I'm running a business right there at the deal.
Or the center of town.
You know, it's in the center of town, and we're trying to bring business downtown.
We need to try it, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that was just the rationale.
You could have more people over there.
I, some of the stuff in my store is made in Oklahoma, and I'm trying to do more made in Oklahoma and carry local people's stuff, so I just thought it would carry into, and, come on, an idea. Unless somebody wants to do it, do it someplace else, that's okay with me, too.
I like that place.
You ready to motion for this?
Yes.
Oh, can I add something else, too? Before, I don't know if this is part of, um, would, if it's okay for you guys, and we vote to do it, could we have a banner made with the Motel Motel, like we do with the rodeo, to post there on the deals? Would that be possible? Is that another, that says, I can see farmers market, and she would be there, right there? Is that something that we need to, along with that?
I'd need to add that in my, because that's the scandal.
I would like to get a banner this year for the rodeo one, instead of doing one that we could switch out the dates each year and just use the same one, which might be something different, but just heads up.
I remember that we.
Put that on my list, Charlie.
I remember that we closed the one hundred block of West Oklahoma one Saturday a month for a farmers market.
Tucker? Oco?
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
You waited all this time.
I know.
Too large.
That's okay, I learned something, all sorts of stuff. I learned that Jay is still gonna be responsible for my work.
Now you're gonna have me every time I come in for lunch looking up. Okay, item G is discussion with possible action to replace Tin Horn on Cemetery Road and Oklahoma Street. Tiffany?
I have to take my phone to my bag. Did any of you guys sit down there and look?
I have a, I get the gas off of that well that's right there, but I haven't been.
The tin horn that, as you're driving, while it's on your, when you're on Cemetery Road, and you come to, say you're going north, and you come to a stop, it's right there, the tin horn that goes right over the, by that stop sign.
North-south one, or east-west one?
East-west, Tin Horns.
East-west.
Uh-huh. It is, it's, the ground is, I mean, it's like washed out underneath, and so it's, to me, it looks really dangerous. So I asked for some, some bids to come in, or some quotes, or quotes to come in to see about fixing it, and got it from Grader Work, and it's less than what I could spend, but the total project would be more because it's what, the Grader? Yeah?
Because of the concrete.
Because of the concrete, and then also the cost of the tin horn. That does not include the tin horn.
We would be buying the tin horn separately.
Yes. So, probably looking at it. probably looking at about sixty-five hundred dollars, I'm gonna assume.
Oh, we need to do it.
Cause I know I was gonna ask county when they had the, um, they were doing some chip and seal that I really couldn't yet because we need to fix that before we can do anything with Cemetery Road, so.
People don't grab about Cemetery Road, they grab about Mitchell Road.
Yeah, I know. I'm working on it.
That one needs to take all the way back down to the base and redone. Uh, that's really expensive.
Yeah, that's about a four hundred thousand.
Yeah, that, and that was just an overtake. That wasn't, that wasn't taking it down like, yeah, but it does.
Because if you have a, if you have a pothole, then, until you build that back up from, I mean, either go and cut, you'll cut it out and build it up from the bottom or, or start over brand new and do everything. You're just gonna have the same. Problem is for, you know, forever. They'll, they'll be pretty and patched for a little bit, but it's ultimately gonna be a crap road again, yeah.
Make a motion that we, uh, replace the tin horn on Cemetery Road in that Oklahoma.
Second? Go ahead. I second that. I broke.
Carol?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Do we need to make that a? An emergency clause now? Well, no, because there, there, there's a fourth out, forty-six hundred.
It's fine, as long as it says it in there, because it's gonna be different vendors.
Okay.
It's gonna be like, um.
I didn't know if we needed to give like a seven thousand dollar limit or?
As long as you guys have proof to repair, I think.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item H, discussion with possible action to purchase a two thousand twenty-two Chevy fifteen hundred pickup from the street department. I did not realize this was gonna be on here till I got the agenda.
Sorry, I just threw it on there because I text him and he's like, um, I have to have my, I have to have my order in Friday for the twenty-twenty-two's.
Okay, I, I have a recommendation though. I think we need a three-quarter ton pickup. I think we're beating our half-ton pickups to death with weight and trailers and I, I just think we need one three-quarter. I'm not saying we need to go to.
We have the one ton in the street department.
Okay.
Um, this would be to be, um, mainly hauling mowers.
Okay, this isn't water dep?
No, 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 this is street department.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, they haven't, we haven't got to that point yet with for the water.
Okay, I'm misunderstood. I was pulling the excavator down and stuff, I thought years. Huh?
That's what they kind of, their pickup, that pickup's like twenty years old, but they will.
So this one would replace, okay, so we have a ninety-three Chevy one ton.
We have employees that are younger.
We have a two, a ninety-six, the ninety-six red Chevy pickup that we got from Pioneer.
Oh, that thing's got three hundred and some thousand miles on it.
Yeah, I know.
And a plywood seat, literally.
And we have the two thousand ten one ton.
Quote me on that.
And then the two thousand twenty, um, Chevy pickup. So, um, they want to take the two thousand, or the ninety-three Chevy one ton and put it where they put that, install that spreader, the sand, salt, sand spreader. Install it on there because they've gotta drill holes in the bed, they've gotta do some stuff, so it would be a permanent installation on that one.
That makes sense.
Um, and then, um, this one, um, and then they would be able to have enough vehicles for everybody to go out and mow and different things.
So are we still keeping that red one?
Yes. We still have, we, we got it.
It moves?
We gotta, we gotta gradually replace these vehicles. We can't just.
The last truck we got, we got Carter, why, uh?
This is Carter.
Oh.
This is Joe Cooper?
They're, okay, Joe Cooper, they're the ones who have the, um.
State bid.
The state bid, sorry. I put Carter on my, and this guy came up, so. I think it is. I think they work with Carter on the state, the fleet.
They might, because let me tell you, we bought a Ford Firetruck cuz it was on state bid of Ford at five fifty from the dealer in Hinton, had the state bid, but Carter Chevrolet delivered that pickup.
Yeah.
Here.
Here. Yeah, yeah, two-ton pickup.
But, yeah, that's because I know I've been contacting Carter, so.
Yeah, I questioned that and they're, on the state bid, they're all working together.
I move that we purchase a Chevy pickup in the amount of twenty-five thousand six hundred and forty dollars.
Keith?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item I, can I just skip this? Is discussion, discussion with possible action to accept the resignation from Brann Gaffey.
I'm actually, I'm actually good. We're accepted.
My second, roll call.
Carol?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
I just want to say Brann has been an excellent dispatcher, and the fire chief is saying that, not the mayor, so. She's done a great job for us. All right, item J is accept or reject any resignation that's not received prior to posting to the agenda. New business, any matter not known or which cannot be reasonably forced, things prior to the time of posting of the agenda. Citizens comments.
I have a question. So with all the changes that have been made by the planning commission and all those you discussed tonight, will those be on the website, the cha, with the changes will be made?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
You want to run it to table?
Citizens comments, councilperson, did you all have anything? Uh, councilperson reports, Keith?
Cliff?
No.
Carol?
Richard?
Guys must be tired. I move the agenda.
My second.
Roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right.
Y'all gonna stay for the water?
You don't have to stay. Hennessey Utilities, Boarding, Board of Trustees, regular meeting. Thanks for coming and staying last day. July eighth, roll call.
Keith?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Items two, consider approval of consent agenda, minutes of meeting, approval of claims as follows, June purchase orders sixteen thousand two thirteen ninety-five, July purchase orders seventy-six thousand six nineteen eleven, July meter deposit refunds, does that mean there's none? Or is just a dollar sign?
Yeah, they're not, they're not done yet.
All right, and the treasures report.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
I second that. Roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Citizens comments, other scheduled business discussed, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. Item A is discussion with possible action to repair, paint the roof, and building at the water shop to pay it three eight five south nine. If you all have looked at that building, the roof is rusty and leaking, I think, anyway.
Yes.
And, uh, it needs a facelift. It's, it's a town building located right on Main Street, and it just needs to look better than it does.
So I asked Dirk Haymaker to look at it and see if he'd be willing to do the painting and the repairing. They're gonna take, uh, he proposes to take the skylights out of the roof and put, you know, put tin back, um, and then he'll go around and, uh, he'll paint it, the roof, and I includes the, the type of product he'd be using. And then also paint the, uh, I think there was two coats on the roof and then one coat on the outside of the building.
So this fifty-nine fifteen is just the roof, correct? Cuz we've got two estimates.
Yes, one, that, you have to total them together.
My papers are.
You gotta go walk through, you gotta do it.
Okay, so fifty-nine fifteen is for the roof, repairing the roof and coating it with the coat stuff. But that does not, that's not all of his price. That includes what we would be getting from Lowe's. Cuz the town would be, uh, purchasing directly from Lowe's the product.
We had about three, five young girls, each one earned twelve.
One of them is twelve.
Yes, uh-huh, right here. So his price would only be about, um, three thousand dollars. And then the rest would be ours. Um, and then to paint the outside, this is another one I wouldn't have to bring to you guys, but since it's a project, um, state requires that, I mean, I don't think it would be wanted, it would be audited, but state requires that it comes to you, can, it goes over as a project. And since we wanna do, um, because we're not paying him or.
And we could really probably get by saying the painting on the roof are two separate projects, but just, uh.
I'm trying to let people know exactly what we're doing.
Exactly where we're at.
And where the money and stuff is going.
I appreciate that.
But, so it cost him about three thousand dollars, um, thirty, I think it's right around thirty-seven hundred to, um, to do the roof repair. And then, um, it's gonna be, um, approximately eight hundred to do the, um, his portion of painting one coat um, around the street shop, um, the outside walls.
Will that, uh, one coat?
I think we probably need two.
I need two.
This is off topic, but I think that on the old school gym, the, the letters gymnasium should be painted. And that white door is off, I must be looking, you have to pick up, you know, that's Main Street, that's telling after image of Hennessey. That little white door should probably be a red, or even that color, white against the red, just, it's a, it's a topic for, maybe next time.
Are we saying you need to double the fourteen, forty-seven?
I think so, because I think it needs two coats.
I'll make a motion to.
I'm not, I'm not, you're, sorry about that.
I motioned to repair and repaint the roof and on the building at the water shop.
Second, roll call.
Carol?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Okay, item B is discussion with possible action to install water sewer lines in the Osborne addition for new housing.
He should have stayed.
Yeah.
He should have stayed.
Oh, is that his project?
Yes. Okay, so now that we've learned a lot tonight about plating and stuff like that, back in the day.
You sure about that?
They, the Osborne addition was.
Under my signature.
Evidently. I didn't know that, but, okay.
It was.
So the town accepted the final plat and it did not, it shows on the map that it has sewer line. But it, it warlines, but it does not.
Okay, perfect case in point of why we need inspections when developers put things in. Because I signed off on that. I had no idea those weren't there until yesterday. So, I mean, seriously, that's, that's why we need somebody to oversee what's going on out there. Somebody with expertise in those fields.
So, um, and he's ready to build, um, on the northwest corner of that addition, he's ready to build two homes. And so it has no water over there and no sewer.
So where are we at on sewer funds since we just left fifty on that place up north?
Well.
Can we table this for a month?
Was that a motion I'll second?
Um, anyway, so we will probably, it's something that needs to be done. He has been talking about and asking, what is the city gonna do, provide me water and sewer?
And we, we need to.
And even when Curtis was here, he was asking Curtis, um, so.
Yeah, we, we need to do this.
And I got the engineer stuff, and so I think we're gonna have to dip into our fund balance and make a bunch of money for this.
How much?
Well, how much are we gonna have to dip in?
I mean, can we not wait to put the cost of the elegant or the other store in at four hundred feet? Have we ever got a cost for it yet?
Um, it's going to be, yes, um, I, they're working on it. I'll have it in the next couple of days. It's gonna be actually a change order on that sewer project that we originally did. So we'll get it under those contract prices.
So what kind of price are we looking at over here?
So there's an alternative one, an alternative two.
That's for the water. So for the sewer is with a ten percent or fifteen percent contingency is a hundred and fifteen thousand for the sewer.
Yeah, that'd be about building one in that, where?
Wow. Um, for the water, um, I liked the, the alternative one.
Right?
The twenty-five. There is an existing water line, um, Osborne addition, there's an existing water line on the east side of the road on Osborne Drive, so they would just bore, I think it's three bores. No, four, like four. They would bore under the road and where we can set meter cans there from that existing water line. And that would be about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so now let me ask you this, are they gonna bore for each house?
No, we would have.
Bore one and run a service line?
One and a service line would cost us about seventy-seven thousand.
I can't find mine, okay, cuz I prefer not to do it that way anyway, because we've got issues in town right now. We've got a whole block running on a two-inch line and, and I see that they're looking at a bigger line than that, but.
Yes, their alternative one is to bore in four different places and they're one bore, which would be a four-inch water line.
Okay.
Um, and then it would have two meters on it. So that would serve the rest of the homes that he has over there.
Oh, yeah, we're doing a double meter can, yeah. Okay, I think, I think that's all we need to do.
So what's this that shows the, oh, you said there's a water line on the, on the east side of Osborne?
Yes.
I got you. And so he's developed it on the west side of Osborne, so he's building this.
So what he's wanting to do, instead of, um, it would be proposal one, so like there would be one, two, three bores and then at the end of that bore would be like a service line, would be like a meter that can at the end of those four bores, and that would serve eight homes.
This, what do you want me to say? Here?
Yes.
What happens if you don't prove stuff like this?
Huh?
What happens if you don't prove stuff like this?
He's stealing, I guess.
Does he steal it since we, we approve it and that you want?
I don't know. I have to work. I don't know, I'd have to look into that, I don't know.
Cause Bert probably can identify his signature in nineteen eighty-one.
I was still using a pencil that fat and writing in a big sheet.
I, I don't know.
So where are we getting money?
We would have to pull it from our fund accounts.
Is that doable?
It's doable.
Is it ideal? No.
I don't like doing that. Basically, it's saying we're spending more than we're gonna take in this year, or I do that.
I mean, we still are waiting for, um, you know, our state money, which we can use on utilities, which we're supposed to get, but I haven't heard anything definite on that, on when we're gonna get that.
But I kinda feel like if it already shows that we did it, we need to go ahead and do it. And my, that's my opinion.
Yeah, but you're gonna get meter, you're gonna get meter hookups and they'll be more, you know, as families move to Hennessy and it'll be a, there'll be a, a tax, I mean.
You get more homes, I mean, yeah, I mean, he's looking at, he's looking at building all the homes there. I mean, he, he sells them as soon as he builds one, I mean.
They said there's a.
Pardon?
There are nice homes inside, he's, he's got a nice layout inside those houses.
So what's the total cost gonna be?
For water and sewer?
Uh-huh. Is it gonna be the hundred and fifteen and the twenty-five thousand?
Uh, it's a hundred and fifteen, I think.
And then the twenty-five for the water?
Push a one forty.
Yeah, one thirty-nine, three ninety-four. And that's with the fifteen percent contingency and hopefully, um, if we could get this done and get it out to bid, hopefully, I mean, I'm hoping that things still come in, the bids come in under what we proposed, so hopefully that'll be another case.
So would we have to both detect bids or can you?
Well, if we approve to do this, we still have to go get permitting from DEQ too. We'll have to get permits from DEQ to do the project and then we'll have to go out for bid.
Our motion that we install the wa, or take action to install the water and sewer lines in Osborne addition for the new housing.
Second, roll call.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Do we need to differentiate that we wanted to use alternative one or alternative two, or just the fact that we're gonna try to do it?
Do you want to amend your motion to include alternative one on the water?
Uh, we're dead. To include, uh.
Yeah, motion to include.
Motion to include item one, correct?
Well, to approve water lines under alternative item one, right?
To approve item one, right?
I didn't see that.
Motion to approve item one on the water, twenty-three forty-four, correct?
Do they tour the? I didn't see that, I didn't see that.
What?
Okay, roll call.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item C is discussion with possible action to approve rates for city and transfer station, also known as the dump.
Can we table that for a special meeting?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Item D is accept or reject any. No, Cliff, no, Harold, yeah, Richard.
Definitely, I see you being busy, either by all the, getting all, all these issues and things that are on our agenda, I see what you've been up to and I see why you put in a lot of overtime hours, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Luckily she didn't pay by the hour.
How's this one pulled down?
Well, I would say that, but you know, we had ten days of rain, so.
Have you been in trouble getting chlorine?
When do we get our? That's adjourned.
When do we get our?
Second, roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Bert? Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Okay, now you can visit.